Tuesday evening, August 29, 2017. Our colleague Paul Healy is on vacation this evening. The board was actually, this meeting was called to order at 6:30. The board entered into executive session. We are now returning to open session. We'll start with the approval of minutes from our August 8 meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of the August 8 meeting as presented.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next on the agenda are public comments on any matter not on the agenda. Okay. Next, you'll notice that at the table, we are joined by two members of the Personnel Board, Marie Harris and Samira Million. In the executive session that just preceded this meeting, we had discussion about a new contract for the library. So Marie and Samira, if you could give us the headlines.
The Personnel Board is pleased to present this memorandum of agreement between the Town of Hingham and the Library Staff Association, represented by SEIU Local 888. This is a three-year contract, which provides for a 2% increase in each of the three years. There was an equity adjustment for the library technician position and also for the pages, which brought them up just north of the midpoint, as we have done historically through our comparison of our 19 comparable towns. In the longevity, there was a new 25-year step put in at $1,000, which is $200 higher than the $800 previously at the top step. There was a page supervisor increase of $350 to be paid annually on the anniversary date, and a volunteer, a new volunteer coordinator stipend of $500 that was for training and orienting new volunteers to the library. And a training room, two other stipends. One is a training room stipend, which is a dollar per hour, and that will be paid to designated staff for each scheduled hour that they work in the technology training room, and also a programming stipend of $1 per hour that will be paid to designated staff for each scheduled hour worked creating or presenting public programming. There was an educational incentive, tuition reimbursement was increased to $6,000 per fiscal year, and it will be paid for members of the bargaining unit who successfully complete professional courses during that semester. There was an increase in the uniform allowance for the full-time custodians to $300 and $150 to the part-time custodian, and that would be paid through a vendor purchase order system. Also, there was a correction to the grievance procedure, a new language added to the grievance procedure that would put the town administrator or designee hearing the grievance and also the Personnel Board and Library Director to be invited. And then there was a bereavement clarification on how the bereavement leave would be taken. And basically, that's it. It was a very good round of negotiations, and I think that the library staff worked very hard, and Linda Harper did a great job, and Joan Allen in crunching numbers. And also, we'd like to thank Tom Mayo. He was very, very good in keeping us grounded. And Peter Thornell, who is the librarian and the union president, we'd like to thank him for his leadership and for maintaining a very positive and constructive tone throughout the negotiation process. And if I could just share, I would also like to thank Peter for his opening comments on the first night of negotiations. He gave a tribute to Nelson Ross, who was a member of the Personnel Board and also a library trustee, and he gave a very nice tribute to Nelson. And I think we were all thankful, and it was very heartwarming. And Nelson was just a wonderful resource to the town, a wonderful human being, and he gave very generously of his talent, and he is missed. So I just wanted to thank Peter and all of the union for their leadership and for a very, very good round of negotiations. Both parties came away, I think, feeling very positive with the outcome.
Thank you.
That's it.
Karen, anything to add?
Well, I just think, I think you both and Linda and the union staff did a fantastic job with this, and as we discussed a little bit in executive session, you know, I do think that this contract negotiation embodies Nelson Ross's philosophy of taking care of your workforce. You are the folks that are providing services. The library is a busy, popular place, and, you know, I think we want a productive and efficient and effective workforce, and I think the changes that the Personnel Boards negotiated with the union moves us forward in that regard. So congratulations on a great process and a great product for the town.
Yeah, I would echo Karen's thoughts, and I think I would also be remiss if we didn't acknowledge some very significant contributions by a library volunteer, and that is Joan Newell. And Joan Newell was, has been the volunteer coordinator for the library for many years, and is just delightful and kind and generous with her time. And as Joan is transitioning out of that role, part of this negotiation was figuring out how to fill those very significant shoes. And I think for me, it not only highlights that we have people in this community like Joan who just give so selflessly of their time for so many years, but it also speaks to the volunteerism in this town, which is just tremendous. So I offer congratulations and just a big, big thank you to Joan Newell on behalf of the town and on behalf of the library. Anyone in the public have a question or would like to make a comment about the contract?
Do you want to read, do you want me to read the statement from Peter?
You know what, Tom, if you could please, I'd appreciate it.
So Peter Thornell is the union representative for the library staff, and he provided a statement that I think is worth noting at this meeting. He writes, "On behalf of the union, HPL Union Committee, thank you for inviting us to the upcoming Board of Selectment meeting where our newly agreed upon contract with the town will be presented. Unfortunately, none of the committee members were able to attend, but I'd like to expressly thank Marie Harris and Samira Million for running such a smooth negotiation. David Bazler for enjoying or for ensuring the contract was updated seamlessly, and Linda Harper for always having the best interests of the library and its staff at heart." And they also go on to say that they're proud to represent Hingham in their capacity as a library staff and look forward to equally productive contract negotiations in years to come.
We appreciate Peter's kind words.
Just one more.
So one of the things you didn't touch on when you went through this was, this contract as a total package is extremely consistent with all the other labor contracts that you've settled, right perfectly in line, and I think that's another goal that the Personnel Board has along with the Board of Selectment. I know people usually ask that question at some point in time. How much was it?
And I think Marie highlighted that these are 2% salary increases, and as we all know, we live in a proposition two-and-a-half world, so if our revenues are only going up by two-and-a-half percent, that means that we have to manage our expenses within that same amount. So would you like to make a motion?
So with that, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Library Staff Association, SEIU Local 888, effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Marie, Samira, thank you again.
Thank you.
For the great work. Okay, next, Mr. German.
Madam Chairman, Members of the Board, Keith German, 104 Kilby Street, and I am also your Director of Veteran Services. I rise tonight to share an inspirational story about how two young men of Hingham decided to give back to our community. They took it upon themselves to sell ice cream from their boat in the Hingham Shipyard this summer. Their sales went so well that all the proceeds received during the Fourth of July were donated to the Veterans Office. The $700 raised, yes, $700 worth of ice cream, was split between our two funds. The Veterans Benefit Fund, which enables us to fund scholarships, awards, and memorials for veterans throughout the town, and the Veterans in Need Fund, which provides allotments for emergency food, fuel, and shelter. It is my honor now to introduce to you, the Board, these two gentlemen, Patrick Doyle O'Neil and Patrick Edward Rizzo.
You took a really good business idea, and you thought about a way to give some of it to your community. And, you know, that's just such a wonderful example to all of us, to your peers, to everybody in the community. And, you know, one thing that we all have to remember is that there are members of our community who sometimes, in a given month, have difficult choices to make. Do I fill the medical prescription, or do I go to the grocery store? Can I turn up the thermostat and heat the house when I've got last month's oil bill? And, you know, the money that you've raised goes a very long way in helping people stay above their crisis level. And while that's important for everybody in our community, it's particularly important for people who have served and defended our country and put their own lives at risk. So on behalf of the Board, we want to say thank you very much. We congratulate you on the great success. We have a certificate for each of you. I'll just read one. Certificate of Appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Patrick Doyle O'Neil. In recognition of valuable contributions to the Hingham Veterans Council, in grateful appreciation for your generous donation, on behalf of the veterans of Hingham, we are proud to have such outstanding youths in our community. Would you like to add anything?
No, I think you summed it up. I think the fact that you are mindful of those among us who have served to defend us, and as Mary said, may have run into hard times, or provided us with the opportunity to properly recognize those folks, is a huge effort on your part, and so we are very, very proud of you.
You're both at Hingham High School?
I'm at Hingham High School.
Okay.
I'm at Milton Academy.
Milton Academy, yeah. Well, and in both of your school communities, I think you're both great examples, and we'd encourage you to get involved with the Hingham Veterans Club, if you haven't done so already, because it's a great organization, and it's a way to help spread the good deeds around. So thank you again. If you'd both like to come up and get these, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Patrick?
Congratulations.
Wrong. Here you go, Patrick.
Thank you.
You're going to need to switch there, I think. But it was cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I see that both of your parents are in the back of the room, and I know you're so proud of your sons, and we're so proud of them too. So thank you for, thank you for supporting them in this effort, and we really do appreciate it, and we know you're proud of them as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a public hearing on the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 80 feet of 2-inch gas main on Main Street.
I'm going to do this to my phone.
Harry, are you by yourself tonight?
Apparently, I don't know if the bridge is stuck up tonight.
I think they think Harry can do such a good job that they're just going to let him do it. Now we'll put all those requirements in that they're not here for, so.
Exactly. So Harry, we have, we've received the package, but for the benefit of the audience, could you maybe just summarize the request?
National Grid has come forward to install and maintain 80 feet of, I think it's 6-inch gas main in Main Street, and it will be connected on South Street in order to service the new Lincoln building at 51 South Street. Other than the comments I put down on paper, I would recommend that the Board consider restricting the working hours on this job between 8:30 p.m. and 4:30 a.m., Sunday through Thursday, to alleviate any congestion in the square that is already in there, so.
You said Sunday through Thursday, so specifically not Friday.
Right.
And that's not in your, that's not in your conditions at the moment?
No.
Okay.
And Harry, the hours on Sunday through Thursday that you're recommending?
8:30 p.m. to 4:30 a.m. I believe this job shouldn't take more than, you know, four or five days to install and activate.
And if that work is to be completed at night, would it be necessary to notify any residences? I realize it's down in the square, but I'm also mindful of night work and the effect that that might have on people who live in the area.
Yeah, National Grid's very good at notifying, you know, butters and neighborhoods when they're doing work in a certain area, and I could just remind them of this fact, and if the Board approves the working hours, that as well.
Harry, do you have a sense of when National Grid is thinking about scheduling this work?
I don't, but I think it would be within the next two or three weeks. I haven't, I haven't spoken to anyone from National Grid yet. In fact, I'm not even sure if it's going to be a National Grid crew or, you know, subcontracting crews that are going to be doing the work as yet.
I would urge people to be notified. This time of year, windows are getting opened again as it gets cooler outside, and.
So the last time we had some work down the square, we went through a different notification process, and we could ask to do that again, where we just use our own internal process to help communicate with the people.
I think that would be, I think that would be helpful. Thank you. And Harry, I think when, this is the one that came to me a couple of weeks ago, this portion of Main Street is not under the moratorium. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
So is 8:30 to 4:30 a.m., is that the, is that sort of the typical work time? You know, if you're going to do this night work, you'd give them that length of time?
Yeah, most of the shops down there will be closed, and the restaurants would be open, but they should be able to navigate through there without any difficulties. The banks are closed primarily, I mean, so the traffic would be minimal, and the impact on the store owners would be negligent at best.
Yeah. I was just thinking of the other end, like, you know, I guess I'm thinking of the neighbors and whether it makes some sense to shorten up the days. I know it would take them longer. Shorten up the hours and consider more days in the project, just so it's not, I just don't, I have no sense for how noisy it's going to be.
I'm not totally familiar with, you know, National Grid's, you know, workforce, but I think when they do night work, I mean, the work is guaranteed eight hours.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Okay.
The work shouldn't be extremely loud because of, you know, once they cut the trench, there'll be a backhoe primarily that's running.
Okay.
The dump truck, you know, with the loading will shut off till it moves, and it's only an 80-foot trench, so I don't think, you know, the noise is going to be, you know, those nights of work, and maybe shut the window, turn the air conditioner on, you're all set to go, you know?
Yeah.
It's not going to be blistering noise, but.
Okay. I do like the idea of using our internal notification, just to make sure. I just, I mean, from my perspective, it goes a long way if people have a heads up.
Okay. Any other questions?
So do we have to add that specifically?
You would have to add the restriction of hours that you suggested?
Yeah, I'll notify them.
So you'd have to add that in your vote?
Let's add that to the vote. Okay?
Are you all right with that?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 80 feet of 2-inch gas main in Main Street. This gas main will originate from an existing 6-inch gas main in South Street and continue under the surface of Main Street for the entire length to completion at 51 Main Street. This main is needed to provide a new service to 51 Main Street. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, as outlined in the letter dated August 4, 2016. Hours of work are restricted to Sunday through Thursday evening, beginning at 8:30 p.m. and concluding by 4:30 a.m.
Each day.
Sunday through Thursday. Right, each day, okay. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Harry, thank you. Thanks, Harry.
Thank you. Captain National Grid?
Next is a public hearing on the request of the 99 Restaurants in Boston LLC. Welcome.
Good evening. Boy, these meetings run right on time. I looked up and I was like, 7:15. Bob, come on up. Kevin, come on up. Good evening. My name is Joe Devlin. I'm an attorney for the 99 Restaurants with offices in Newburyport in Boston. With me is Bob Bato, who's the Senior Director of Facilities for the 99, and Kevin Delaney is the General Manager and the manager of record of the manager on the license. If you please, the Chair, I can summarize the application before you. This is called an alteration of license premises. That's the ABCC terminology. I don't think it fits the description here because they're actually.
Chipped down the whole thing.
Taking out the whole building and rebuilding it. So it's the extreme alteration of license premises, that they just didn't have that box on the application. It's actually getting smaller. The footprint's going from about 7,800 square feet to about 6,300 square feet. There was a banquet room there, facility, and some inefficiencies in the way that the kitchen was set up, because it was an almost 100-year-old building. So they're redoing that, and so that's how they're making up for the extra room, and they're not really in the banquet business anymore, or the catering business anymore. So this is going to be a brand-new building with brand-new equipment and brand-new facilities. It's in the latest 99 concept. The building was tired from the 1930s. It was a red coach. It was a Chinese food restaurant. It was a bunch of other things, and just a lot of wear and tear on it. They project to open December 12 to the public. 9th and 10th, soft opening for family and friends. As you have noted, it is demolished. They're working on a foundational permit right now, and they're investing about $1.4 million into the building.
I'll note that for the building inspector.
I was going to say at the very end, and you're going to have a nice, probably higher-assessed building.
Karen, any questions?
I just know that I've heard from a lot of people that were really anxious when the building came down. I got a lot of, you know, what is going on? Where did the 99 go? And so I think people watching tonight are going to be very excited to hear that they're going to get their new and improved 99. So I think folks are very excited about the re-establishment of that restaurant.
Thank you.
And I would remind people that there is a 99 at the other end of Hingham. So if you want to get a 99 fix and get your popcorn. In between now and December 9, that it's there. So, Tom, all of the paperwork and everything?
It is.
It's all in order. Are there any questions from the public on this? Would you like to make a motion?
I would. I'd like to move that we approve the request of 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC, DBA, 99 Restaurant and Pub to alter the license premises. The project consists of raising the existing 8,840-square-foot building and the reconstruction of a new 6,340-square-foot building in its place. The restaurant will be shut down for approximately three months to complete the remodel. This vote is subject to the approval of all town boards and departments, completion of the premises in accordance with the plan submitted, and the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So Kevin, this doesn't change the fact that we moved the liquor license to you, right, like a month ago?
No, I'm still the gentleman.
You're still the guy?
I'm still the gentleman.
It's still on the paper.
Okay.
I'm just bouncing out to other restaurants, because they don't give me a hole.
The other important thing here is that we're able to offer all the existing employees' jobs in our other store.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Oh, thank you, Bob. That's good to hear.
When we go back and open, we're going to plan on hiring additional staff to complement the existing employees.
That's fantastic.
Which is great for them.
Terrific.
Good.
Terrific.
99 is here to stay. Thank you.
Good work.
We're glad. We're very glad. Thank you so much.
Mary, do you mind if we jump ahead just one more vote further down and do the 99?
Oh.
The change of directors.
We have a change of directors.
This is at the corporate level. I don't know if you're going to have a question for him, but he's here. This is, you know, process.
This goes through the inverted process, so it goes, because there's 64 locations, it goes to the ABCC first.
Okay.
They approve it. I brought a big box of applications in, and we went through it with the investigator. Then they give a preliminary approval and send out a letter to each municipality. Basically, Charlie, actually, most of the time, it's a change in corporate headquarters, but one of the officers, Charlie Noyes, is a local guy. He's been with the 99 for 40 years. I'm surprised he wasn't. I actually was saying, oh my God, I'm actually going to have a change of officer here for once, because I thought he might show up too. But the other guy is down at the headquarters down in Tennessee.
Okay. All right. I'd like to move that we approve the request of 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC, DBA, 99 Restaurant and Pub for a change of officer-directors outlined in the letter from the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission dated July 25, 2017.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. All right. Good night. Thanks for coming in. Next is the award of a contract for 308 Cushing Street.
So as the Board knows, this is the former municipal light plant. Tom Mayo has been handling the procurement process to publicly offer the property for proposals, along with Real Estate Counsel Susan Murphy, and I'd let Tom walk you through it.
So we had a couple, we had two bids, one from an art studio purveyor and another from Boston Golf. The winner was Boston Golf, and we're recommending that you enter into contract with Boston Golf to utilize that property.
So your vote tonight is merely to award the bid to Boston Golf, a little bit of a two-step process, because they don't really get anything tonight other than your award. They still have to negotiate a contract that you have to approve, which is the meat of what we have to do over the next two months to develop that lease, because, remember, you're leasing the property to them.
And I think, thank you for moving ahead on this, because we are carrying the utility costs for this building, and particularly as we get into the winter months, it would be great to have a lease executed so that those costs would not be borne by the taxpayers.
Exactly. And Tom, I do believe that Boston Golf did include in their bid provisions for the high school rowing.
Yes, so the high school rowing team will be able to store their boats in that facility, and Boston Golf will work around that.
And we're grateful to them for.
Absolutely.
For doing that, and I would also acknowledge the other bidder on this, which was a local business who is looking for some different space, and one thing that I've asked Ted and Tom to do is to keep that kind of on the radar screen.
Yes.
So that as other properties or space opportunities come up, we have a lot of small and independent business owners here in town, and finding a cost-effective space for them to work is a little bit challenging. So while this one didn't work out, we're keeping our eyes open.
Yeah, absolutely. I thought the other proposal is a really, really interesting idea. It just doesn't work in this, in this space at this time.
But there's, like you said, we have the tree and park barn, for example, where another local contractor is there, and this has been a very effective way the last dozen years or so, where we've been able to lease some of our buildings and assets away while the town figures out what it wants to do with it long-term, and we don't lose the asset, but yet we don't have to, you know, fund it.
And we're providing local opportunity.
Excellent.
Any questions or comments from the audience on this? Okay. If not, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the Board accept the proposal of New Boston Golf Club Inc. submitted in response to the request for proposals for disposition of real property at 308 Cushing Street, Hingham, Massachusetts, subject to execution of a lease in accordance with the requirements of the RFP and compliance with all other terms and conditions of the RFP and applicable Massachusetts law.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have some appointments. We have some other votes. Let's maybe move to the appointments.
Your first one would be the issue of Daniel Goldstein as a special police officer.
Yep, and people who are watching may have remembered that Mr. Goldstein was a candidate for a patrol position. for a patrol position, and shortly after that is interested in being reappointed as a special police officer for the town of Hingham. And so I'm delighted to see this so quickly.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think Mr. Goldstein took some initiative to meet with the chief, and, you know, I think this is a great development.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Daniel Goldstein as a special police officer for the town of Hingham for a term ending April 30, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have two appointments with respect to chairs of committees. First, with the Foster School Building Committee. Since this board had made its appointments, all seven members of the Foster School Building Committee have been named. The school committee earlier this month had discussion, took a straw vote, and had a recommendation for a chair. The moderator, who is also pursuant to the warrant article, one of the bodies that makes a recommendation for the chair, has agreed with that recommendation. So now it is here before us. And-
I just wanted to jump into the conversation real quick and just let you know that I spoke with Selectman Healy, and he is in favor of a particular candidate. I don't know if you want to get into suggestions or how you want to do that, but-
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Well, and this is a little funny because the way the warrant article's written, the three appointing authorities have to come to consensus around a particular candidate. And so our vote tonight, I guess we vote to a point, but I think we vote to concur-
Right.
-with the two other appointing authorities on the selection of a chair. And my understanding was that the school committee and the moderator have come to some consensus around Linda Hill serving as chair of the Foster School Building Committee. I would be in support of that unless-
This is the person that's suggested as well.
Unless Selectman Healy has some other-
Miss Allison Paul.
And I would concur with that. So I think while the three groups have all voted individually, obviously the moderator's person of one voting, but I think we have achieved consensus. So I would vote to recommend Linda Hill be appointed the chair of the Foster School Building Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And so I just changed that motion to recommend us instead of a point. And so thank you for that catch. Then we have a Route 3A task force.
So I also spoke with Paul about-
Yes.
Knowing that we were probably going to cover both of these. And he is also suggesting somebody. If you want me to throw the name out loud again, I don't know how you guys want to do this. You want nominations first, or?
I think it's a, well-
Well, I think why don't you share with the board? He's the liaison to that group, and this is his recommendation, obviously for you guys to make that decision.
Paul has told me that he would recommend Judy Sneeth for the chair of the Route 3A task force.
I would support that recommendation.
And I would as well.
Okay. So I'd like to move that we appoint Judy Sneeth as chair of the Route 3A task force.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I see a member of the Route 3A task force in the audience. And we know, Deirdre, that this task force has a lot of work to do. And I think we've appointed some great members. I think we have a lot of our staff who's going to be playing a support role. And we understand kind of what the charge is between now and next year. And I think with the combination of staff and volunteers, we're going to be engaging on this, you know, very, very quickly. And I would just also say that the board did note that there was an editorial in the Hingham Journal, and there has been some correspondence. So we understand that this is a public safety issue that continues to be a public safety issue. And we're looking forward to the task force beginning its work. So we appreciate everybody's volunteering on that.
Did you vote that?
Yes, we did. We did. Okay. We have, the next vote on our list is a vote that the board needs to take, but I wish we didn't have to take it. We have, on August 1st, Fire Chief Bob Olson wrote to the board. I'm just going to read just the first paragraph of his letter. Dear Board, I will reach my 65th birthday on February 9, 2018. By Massachusetts law, I must retire on the last day of the month I turn 65. I am providing you this information so that you may work with me to develop a succession plan for my retirement and the selection of a new fire chief and deputy chief for the town of Hingham. And I'm just going to read the last paragraph of Bob's letter. Again, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to have served the town for 41 years. As others have done before me, it is now my time to add my brick to the foundation that is the Hingham Fire Department. This evening, the board has to take a vote to accept this letter. And in subsequent meetings, we will have conversations about the process by which we will undergo succession planning for the fire department. And it's difficult to receive this letter. Bob Olson has been a key member of the fire department, and in his capacity as chief, particularly with his work on the Fire Station Building Committee, his contributions have been just so significant. I don't know if you'd like to add anything?
Well, I got an opportunity to work with Chief Olson back in the mid-2000s as a member of the advisory committee. You know, Bob was intimately familiar with the budgeting process and worked closely with Chief Duff to, you know, explain those numbers and needs and advocate for the department before the advisory committee. I got a chance to work with the chief again a couple of years ago in working through the details of the Town Administrator Special Act and how that special act would affect the major departments and department heads in town. And then I just started to get a chance to work with him as the board of selectmen liaison to the fire department. So I'm hoping it was nothing I said. But, you know, we are blessed with very fine employees. And for 41 years, Chief Olson has served this town ably and with all of his heart and soul. And, you know, can't thank him enough for those contributions.
So I'd like to make a motion to, with regret, accept Fire Chief Robert Olson's notice of retirement effective February 28, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item on the agenda is a vote to enter into a contract with Beals &amp; Thomas for the design and permitting of the town-owned wharfs and seawalls. I see we have people in the audience. I don't know, are you going to take this? Are we?
No, I think unless you have questions, we wanted them to be here if you had questions. But if you recall, we were going to have this on the agenda at the last meeting. And for a variety of reasons, we decided to wait until this meeting so you could take a look at it. I think it's pretty straightforward. It speaks exactly to, you know, what town meeting had requested. It's consistent with the procurement processes. Roger oversaw that process, along with the Harbor Development Committee. And it really is the next step for them to take. It's over $50,000, so otherwise it would have been something I would have signed. And it requires your signature.
Any questions?
No, I mean, I think it is entirely consistent with the two warrant articles the town meeting passed this last town meeting. It is entirely consistent with what we need to do as part of our goals to, you know, to maintain and improve the harbor area. I had an opportunity, as I think you and Paul both did, to talk extensively with Bill Riordan, the chair of the Harbor Development Committee, about these projects. You know, I think the contracts seem spot-on, and, you know, I'm excited that we're moving forward with the proposal.
And in addition to design and permitting for the wharfs, these are also, these funds include seawall design and permitting for Martins Lane and Downer Avenue for those seawalls. And I know this board has gotten letters over the years about the sidewalks. And we can't repair the sidewalks until we repair the seawalls. And again, this was added to the warrant for this past year. So this is really implementing the will of town meeting from this past April. I would just thank Roger. I think you talked to Bill Riordan, and I had a chance to talk to Roger on the phone and just walk through some of the different details. And I know Paul Healy met with Harbor Development Chair Bill Riordan and walked the area, went through it, and we're grateful to Bill for his time. So I think we're all satisfied with the direction and with the process.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot of money coming out of two different warrant articles. And so I think it behooved us to make sure that the contract was addressing the issues that town meeting wanted addressed. And I'm satisfied that it is.
Any questions or comments from the audience on this? Would you like to make a motion?
I would. I would move that we enter into a contract with Beals &amp; Thomas, Inc. for professional services for design and permitting of Veterans Park, Barnes Wharf, Martins Lane, and Downer Avenue as part of the wharf wall infrastructure resiliency improvements.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Roger, and thank you, Deirdre.
Thanks for coming.
Next, we have a number of special one-day wine and malt beverage licenses for different organizations. It's my sweet spot, as you know.
We're prepared.
If I'm not, you know, demolishing liquor premises.
Well, I'm sure you will see that these have all met our new and improved one-day liquor license permitting.
And, Tom, all of the paperwork and everything is all in order?
It is.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages liquor license to Sergio Pungitore on behalf of the Lady of the Light Committee.
Okay.
For the, I'm sorry, for the Madonna of Light Italian Feast to be held on Oak Street on Sunday, September 3, 2017, from noon to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I move that we approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Michael Dwyer on behalf of the Fruit Center, Inc. for the Grand Wine Tasting Event to be held at the Fruit Center on Saturday, September 16, from 1:00 until 4:00 p.m.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Michael Dwyer on behalf of the Fruit Center, Inc. for the Fall Craft Beer Fest to be held at the Fruit Center on Saturday, October 14, 2017, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m.
Second, but can I ask a question on this one?
Sure.
So these two, Chief, if you know, Mr. Dwyer has parking on site.
Yes.
I know they've done this in the past, so I'm assuming they're able to sort of move people through that parking lot. I mean, I just feel like some Saturdays it's-
That was one of my questions. Is it tight parking lot? The way they have it set up, they've done it in the past, and it's worked out. We didn't have any issues with the contracts.
Okay.
And they do have the backup parking lot.
Right, on the other side. Yep.
Most people won't go to, so they'll be directing, they'll have people directing.
That's what I was wondering. Okay. All right. Thank you.
It was a beat application. They did a good job.
Good. So I seconded it. Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to do the next one?
I would like to move that we approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Jay Tolman on behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association for the Tolman MDA Telethon at Congregation Shalom on Monday, September 4, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. My question is, so there's no special consideration for the service of alcohol at 10:00 a.m., right? We can grant the license, however, for whatever duration, at whatever time we want.
Correct. You have that complete authority.
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Marco Boer on behalf of Hingham High School Rowing Association for the Parent Fall Social to be held at Barnes Wharf on Friday, September 8, 2017, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I move that we approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Robert Lacy on behalf of House of Prayer Lutheran Church for Oktoberfest to be held at House of Prayer Lutheran Church on Saturday, September 23, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and Sunday, September 24, 2017, from noon to 4:00 p.m.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will make a motion to approve the request of the Hingham Downtown Association to use the sidewalks for the Hingham Arts Walk on Sunday, October 22, 2017, from 11:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m.
Second, so I guess the only concern I have on this one is, and I'm assuming they'll work this out with you, we just have sidewalk closures down there as well.
Yes, we have been making and speaking with the builders. And we'll also, if needed, have a police officer down there to assist.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I think I got all the votes.
You did.
Okay. Selectmen and Town Administrator Reports. Ted and Tom?
We have one thing. Tom's going to update you on, you can update him on Adam's Court.
Sure. So on Adam's Court, we had a situation where there was a plan in place to close on a private sale of the property. However, that property is on our subsidized housing inventory, and as a result is deed restricted. And the proper notification process hadn't been followed. So we filed a complaint. That closing has been canceled, and they're now going to follow the process and make sure that that property, during this transaction, we don't lose it off the SHI.
So counsel, again, credit to Real Estate Counsel and Litigation Counsel. They work together very well. Carrie Ryan represented us in court. Wells Fargo, who was pursuing the action, immediately ceased its assistance as soon as we filed it. So it worked out well, and we saved the unit for the town at this point in time.
I'd also thank Sharon Napier and Devlin Cooper for bringing this matter to our attention in time for the town to intervene. That was very helpful. Anything else?
No, that was it.
Karen?
Yeah, I guess, you know, as you suggest, with the fall weather in the air, you know, we'll be turning the page to begin a new academic year. And I'm sure, like the chief, I think we all need to be mindful of greater activity on the roadway with kids walking and riding bikes, school buses. You know, we still have construction projects going on in town. So I'm going to try to take my own advice and leave myself a little extra time to get where I need to go so I can be mindful of that. I guess the only other thing I'd like to say is just, you know, as we turn to September and the start of a new calendar year, I think, or a new academic year, you know, I'm just mindful of the losses that this community has suffered over the last several weeks and months. And the one thing I think that gives me some comfort, and I hope the folks that have suffered those losses, is that we're a community that cares about each other and for each other. And, you know, I hope those folks can take some comfort from that.
Thank you. I had a couple of things. I wanted to announce that the Beals Cove appeal of the Broadstone Bear Cove ZBA permit has been dismissed. And so that means that that permit has been issued, and there are no appeals. And so that will move forward. And that is very good news for the project and for the town with respect to its safe harbor status.
Correct.
I also wanted to acknowledge Keith and Carol Rutherford. The Rutherford's, since 2010, each time we hire a new police officer, the Rutherford's call the police department and ask to purchase and donate a bulletproof vest for that officer. And we hired three officers at our, was it our last meeting?
Yeah.
Was it within the last few weeks?
Yeah.
And the Rutherford's made three donations. They have donated a total of 15 vests since 2010. Their generosity, their sense of commitment to our public safety, it's just really inspirational. I understand that Mr. Rutherford finally went on a ride-along-
Yes, he did.
-with Officer Brady last week. But I really just want to thank them. ...with Officer Brady last week, but really just want to thank them, thank them for their generosity. I wanted to welcome Lynn Barclay, who has assumed the responsibilities of the director of the Hingham Downtown Association, and thank Liz Klein for her many contributions. And we wish Lynn much success and look forward to working with her. I also wanted to thank Dr. Gallo and Liza O'Reilly. I was invited on behalf of the board to attend a new teacher orientation yesterday and had the opportunity to see and welcome new staff and new teachers to Hingham. And I just thought it was a great statement to have somebody from the Board of Selectmen there. I think it really just demonstrates the partnership that we have with the school department. And it was so impressive, as each of the new teachers or administrators were introduced, their credentials were really just fantastic. And it's no accident that we have one of the top-rated school systems in the state and in the country, and we welcome the new teachers. Lastly, I know that Hurricane Harvey is on all of our minds, and we've been notified and seen that there are some individual citizens or groups who are making efforts to try to help those who have been afflicted by Hurricane Harvey. We'd like to thank them, and Karen and I would also like to ask Ted and Tom if you could reach out to both Chief Olsons to see if there are any of our public safety officers or emergency management personnel who might be interested if the opportunity arose to provide help. It's just a tragedy that's what's happening. I don't think we all quite know yet how to help, but to the extent that those opportunities present themselves, I think we, as a town, would like to know that we're doing what we can to help those, to help those communities that are afflicted.
Absolutely.
So thank you. Anything else before we adjourn? Our next meeting will be on...
November 5.
Tuesday, yep, Tuesday, September 5, which will be after the first day of school. So with that, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Good night.